Good afternoon, I want to welcome all of you to the Rules, Elections, Intergovernmental Relations and Neighborhoods Committee. I am joined, if we could have some in the back. Shhh. In the back, if you please come forward so we can begin our committee hearing. I'm joined by Councilman Marquis Harris Dawson. We have a quorum so we can get started. Before we start, I do want to just lay out a couple of things. I plan on taking general public comment, deferring to Mr. Fuentes, calling up the city departments, bringing up, I think, Mr. Pickle and/or Dr. Pickle and Navigant. And if there are any other public comment, we will take that up as well. But I want to...
Not your public comment.
Okay, I'm getting ready to throw something at the city attorney. Comment on this item specifically. Is that okay, Mr. City Attorney? But first of all, the time has come for us to have a serious conversation where it relates to reform of the Department of Water and Power and trying to make a department run more efficiently. I want to go on the record and make sure that everyone knows that Mr. Fuentes has put in an unbelievable amount of work on this issue for a very long time. And the motion that you present to this committee, sir, will be the document that we would work for. But I wanted to be crystal clear, to have everybody know that you have been engaged in this issue and on this issue for a very, very long time. And it is this motion, I think, that is kick-starting the conversation right now today. I also want to acknowledge the work that we've had from the Controller and the City Attorney as well. But we have been working extremely closely with the mayor's office to accomplish a couple of things. Most importantly, and Tony, I'm glad that you're here today, is that we want to come up with a real role for the neighborhood councils in this process. I've had the pleasure to be the chair of the committee that oversees the neighborhood councils for 10 months, give or take. I know what they're capable of, I know their commitment, and this to the neighborhood councils, I view this as a call to action for all of us. So as we proceed with this process, again, in consultation with the mayor, we are going to have, at a minimum, three, what I call, regional community hearings, where I will be, again, along with the mayor, asking, just for discussion purposes, let's say, the neighborhood councils that are in Harbor and the South LA portion, SLANK, and the other alliances, I will ask them to join with this committee in the mayor's office as we host a hearing in the southern part of the district. In the valley, we want to have Bank engaged, along with LANK and the other individual councils, as, again, we have a hearing where everybody is at the table. And of course, we'll do the same thing here in the center, with all of the, you know, the center, I'm drawing a blank on some of the neighborhood councils, or some of the alliances that deal with the center of Los Angeles. Andrew Water. These meetings will be held on Saturday or in the evening so that we get maximum participation. But this is an opportunity to bring forth change, and this is an opportunity to afford Los Angeles as a city the ability to get engaged, and also, this is an opportunity to show off the talent and the skills of the neighborhood councils. So before I begin by bringing up Mr. Harris Dawson, you know, I would like for you to say a few words, then we'll begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a huge, huge, huge undertaking, and I really appreciate the chair, the mayor, but especially Councilmember Fuentes and the team in Council District 7 that has taken the lead to do a lot of the thinking and strategy and analysis on behalf of the council and has presented us with a number of reforms for consideration that I think actually do make a qualitative and quantitative shift in how our utility behaves and how it delivers services. I also appreciate and want to applaud the chair of this committee for laying out a process that calls on all the best thinking in the city. And so neighborhood councils, I think it's going to be important that they step up. We'll hear from people that have been involved in DWP, from the employment side, we'll hear from people that have been involved on the management side, and as the neighborhood councils, we are eager to get feedback and input from people who have been customers of DWP over the years. And so I am approaching this with a good amount of curiosity, excitement, but most importantly, sobriety about the magnitude of the task that we're undertaking over the next several weeks and months. And so today, we'll begin the process of having this discussion. We're eager to hear from Councilmember Fuentes and from our CAO and others, again, as we unpack a very, very complicated and sometimes thorny issue that I think can, again, if we get it right, can qualitatively improve the quality of life for everybody in Los Angeles.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Another thing that I forgot earlier, and this is for the staff that's here today, that by the end of this meeting, I want to pin a letter to Dunn and to all of the neighborhood councils, asking, requesting that they meet on this issue in March and in April. And please respond to us by sending us community impact statements, white papers, anything that they have. Also, we'll be sending them a list of questions that we would like for them to ask their members so that we can get their feedback as well. And so with that said, I think we can begin. This council, I think, over the past few years has shown that it is not afraid to tackle difficult issues, challenging issues, issues that are somewhat controversial. This will be one, but we welcome this challenge. So I'm going to start out with a comment on, in fact, read, Mr. Clerk, item one, and then I'll take comment on item one. Public comment on item one.
Item one is motion, Fuentes, Wesson, O'Farrow, relative to a proposed ballot measure to amend the Los Angeles City Charter and the Administrative Code to restructure the governance of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power.
And it is the desire of this committee to have a document, and we will work very closely with Mr. Fuentes, that we can present to the council in more than enough time to vote to place something on the ballot. So we hope to be finished by this, with this, by June, so that we can take a vote that puts some form of, a significant form of reform on the ballot. With that stated, Mr. Tony, I referenced you, and now I see that you're the first card that I have. So if I could have Tony Wilkinson, I think this is, I think it's a Richard Moss, David Gonzalez, Jack Humphreaville. Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you very much, Council President Wesson, and thank you very much for this opportunity. We certainly will take advantage of it, both your hearings and your request for board comment as well. As you know, I chair the Neighborhood Council DWP Memorandum of Understanding Oversight Committee.
Yes, sir.
Without understanding how much outreach there would be, the committee did pass unanimously a resolution at its last meeting that there be an appointed, follow the IEA recommendation, a citizens committee. And interestingly enough, they're not just talking about neighborhood councils, they're talking about other community. I know that LA Area Chamber was involved this morning. A committee, not, not a commission, just an advisory committee, to make certain that there's formal outside input into this, so that it's not just created by people that we all respect, but who are full-time elected representatives, and that would add, I think, to the mix. So that's what the Neighborhood Council Committee did. Part of the thing is that I thank my former, I'm sorry, I lost you to redistrict, but Councilmember Fuentes for all the work he's done. I think that there's some things that really may need some, maybe the board isn't completely defined. Missing, perhaps, from this is the issue of contracting and the cumbersome city contracting system as it applies to a business like the Department of Water and Power. And I think that maybe the civil service provisions could use some tweaking to both make it effective, but also make all of our stakeholders within the city happy. But this is the kind of thing where I think the broad public input from a committee would be very helpful, so I would urge you to consider that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this.
No, thank you, and be assured that it will be considered. It is our desire to be as open as we possibly can on this issue and take advantage of the residents of the city of Los Angeles. Please come forward, sir. Identify yourself.
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Moss. I'm a business owner in the San Fernando Valley, ratepayer, a former commissioner of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners of the DWP, and chair of the San Fernando Valley Business Political Action Committee. In fact, I'm here as chair to read this statement into the record, please. San Fernando Valley Business Political Action Committee, Valpak, respectfully submits the statement in support of an initiative to be placed before LA city voters to reform LADWP. Valpak was founded in 1981 to help strengthen the economic vitality and improve the quality of life in the San Fernando Valley and the surrounding region. Our bipartisan Board of Directors consists of 19 business owners and residents of the San Fernando Valley who are committed to fostering and preserving good government and a positive business climate throughout the city. As such, we care deeply about the LADWP. In fact, two of our board members have served as commissioners. Valpak strongly supports the motion by Councilmember Fuentes to place the ballot measure before the city's voters to reform DWP. We believe that such initiatives should advance the following goals: one, to de-politicize the LADWP; two, to ensure that LADWP functions as an independent and self-governing utility; and three, to set a mission statement for LADWP to provide that its mandate is to deliver the most reliable, safest, environmentally sound, and cost-effective water and power services to the city. To achieve these goals, we endorse the specific amendments listed in the Fuentes motion with the following changes and clarifications: that the new full-time professional Board of Commissioners have seven members and be constituted to reflect the diversity of ratepayers in the city; that service on the Board of Commissioners be voluntary and unpaid; that Commissioners be subject to a term limit of two, five-year terms; that the mayor continue to appoint Commissioners, subject to confirmation by the city council; that once confirmed, Commissioners shall only be removed during their term for cause such as malfeasance; that the Board of Commissioners be solely responsible for setting and implementing the policies of LADWP; for setting water and power rates; for hiring and firing the general manager;
Thank you.
...for handling all personnel.
Thank you. Thank you. Please submit that to one of the sergeants. So I think it's representing School Board Member Monica Ratliff, and that's Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Council President and Councilmember Harris Dawson. My name is David Gonzalez, and I'm Education Deputy to School Board Member Monica Ratliff. Board Member Ratliff is extremely concerned about the potential impact of LADWP's proposal to increase rates over the next five years, which at full implementation will cost the district an additional $22.4 million, the equivalent of the cost of 211 classroom teachers. LA Unified is LADWP's largest customer. However, unlike commercial customers, LA Unified does not charge for services and cannot raise fees to offset the proposed rate increases. Therefore, Board Member Ratliff strongly supports any amendment to the city charter related to the LADWP that takes public schools into account. Perhaps reliable supports to public schools can be explored and codified. For example, providing crossing guards at all qualifying intersections near elementary schools would benefit our communities, as well as providing other city services that would make students safer at and while traveling to and from schools. I am submitting for your consideration additional documentation, a letter from Board Member Ratliff, a letter from Superintendent King, and other documents from the district. Thank you for keeping in mind the children and families of the city of Los Angeles as you consider this an important matter.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Humphreaville, followed by Mr. Holland, followed by Sarah Rascón. Yes, sir, Mr. Humphreaville, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. My name's Jack Humphreaville. I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council, and I'm the chair of the DWV Advocacy Committee. I also am member of the DWP Oversight Committee with Chairman Tony Wilkinson. On February 6th, the DWP Advocacy Committee and the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition passed a resolution calling for a robust and transparent discussion and debate before any measure is placed on the ballot for voter approval or rejection. The motion also called for the participation by the neighborhood councils on the Governance Committee that it would oversee the drafting of the ballot measure. I have two concerns. What are the provisions regarding the outsourcing of work, especially for utility-built solar, the replacement of water mainlines, and other infrastructure projects? All you have to do is look at the fiasco down at the port where we're buying, where we have 60 cents per kilowatt hour power. The other aspect I'd like to mention is, and since the city is the beneficiary of this transfer, will the city council place on the ballot a charter amendment that requires the city to live within its means? You need our votes to approve the transfer, and we want to know what we get in return. A fiscally responsible city hall is not too much to ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will also have comment and general comment, too.
Well, we're not, I'm told we're not going to have general comment. You want to just rattle it off now, Jack? I'll let you take the minute.
No, no, I can rattle it off anytime.
Go ahead.
In April of 2013, City Council President Herb Wesson announced the creation of the LA 2020 Commission. In April of 2014, Wesson endorsed the 10 recommendations of the LA 2020 Commission at a press conference at the California Endowment. But none of these calls for action have seen the light of day. These include the recommendations for our city to update its 35 community plans, to establish an Office of Transparency and Accountability to oversee the city's precarious finances, to create a Commission on Retirement Security to review our seriously underfunded pension systems that are eating
Go on.
...eating the general fund's lunch, and to form the LA Utility Rate Commission. But they are, but they are all now front and center and will be topics of conversation as voters consider the upcoming ballot measures, and we will remember the city's lack of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland, followed by Sarah Rascón, followed by Mr. Barajas, and followed, I can't quite, is it Guam Kuhn? I can't quite make it out. Yes, go on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, I'm John Holland with the Central City Association. CCA has yet to take a position on this method, yet we believe that DWP is due for reform. The department must be able to be more nimble, such as in hiring and contracting, so it can respond to critical events. And we believe that DWP should be able to keep more of its own revenue to ensure timely and ongoing infrastructure maintenance and replacement. This infrastructure work is vital. This is why CCA is supporting proposed water and power rate increases, and we believe that those rate increases must not be tied to this reform effort. We're eagerly anticipating Chairman Fuentes's briefing to CCA in two weeks on his reform proposals, and we hope that he will be able to answer the questions that our members have. And we hope that with those answers to those questions and the ones that you will ask here today, CCA will be able to take a position on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker, and after, Ms. Rascón, who I, Brian Barajas, again. Gavin, that's you. I couldn't figure that out. Gavin, then Walker Foley. Okay, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
The LA Chamber has long supported DWP governance reform. We support the renewed focus on reforming the utility, and we look forward to hearing specifics and working with city council for the proposal on the November ballot. However, we want to emphasize that reform and the desperately needed rate increases for aging infrastructure should move forward, however, should not be together with the DWP governance reform, but be separate. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Barajas, followed by Gavin. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I guess there are concerns, particularly a letter that was given to, I believe, to yourself.
Yes, sir, yes.
This is from the United Firefighters of Los Angeles, and their concern is that the budget that you would like to cap would put not just the community at risk, but the future conditions by which you meet your standard of living and service to the community is, according to that letter, seems to be cause for concern. I think, what I understand that you guys are attempting here to do, and by all means, I should just be blunt as possible, this is just pure treason. I mean, you guys are giving up the fact that your role in oversight of this department, this is what's happening, and that's why this firefighter, one and others, are concerned that you will be murdering not just your people, but your services. And that's putting it very bluntly, quite a matter of fact. Fuentes and others, this is treason, and I keep repeating it because the factor of treason is when you put, as this letter, as evidence to Herb Wesson, they make it clear you're going to kill people. Well, not in specific wordings, but that's my own wording on it. You will be killing people. That's a fact. But let's talk about where do you get the funding? If you have a federal government, you wouldn't be dealing with budget cuts or surrendering your, shall we say, powers to a department and letting it run wild and free and whatever you want to call it. So what's my opinion? What's my answer to all of this? Well, just take your power back and assert your authority.
Thank you. So if I could get Gavin, followed by Walker Foley, followed by Rachel Horning, Rachel Horning, and Wayne Spindler. Yes.
Good afternoon, Council President Wesson and Councilman Harris Dawson. I just, as you know, I'm the business representative, operating engineer's local 501, and I represent one bargain, one of the bargainers I represent, the city is the Confidential Attorney Unit 31. And I'm a little concerned with the, one of the proposed amendment changes on changing the city charter, charter 271, and possible 670 and 675 on excluding the use of city attorneys over the DWP. It's a big concern, as far as we're concerned. I'm very concerned that there's a consistency across the city in the various departments, such as Harbor, Lawa, other departments, that the consistency of legal representation for the city, for the safety of the city and the enactment of policies, procedures, and guidelines being enacted across the city is consistent, and you don't have a department that runs kind of ad hoc and out of the core of the city business, which puts the city, to me, at a possibility of a risk that we're incurring. So I would ask that you would revisit this issue and take another serious look at it as you're developing the solid proposal. And thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So I'm looking for Rachel Horning. Is this Mr. Foley?
Yes, it is.
And then after Ms. Horning will be Mr. Spindler. Yes, sir.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Walker Foley. I'm an organizer with Food and Water Watch. I feel like most of my comments, they are going to be coming from me personally, though. You know, there's a comment saying those who don't learn their history are doomed to repeat the past. I do think we need comprehensive reform, and to be clear, Food and Water Watch doesn't have a position on this yet, but at the same time, as I read this, we can't support almost any of this. Seeing the cadre of people in the pews behind me and knowing about Mr. Fuentes's corporate servitude, which has earned him the reputation
Let's stay on the actual
I think the motion being presented, you have to take character substance into it. All you have to do is Google California's worst legislator to get a comprehensive argument on this.
Now, hey, man, look, this is about business, so let's stay on this subject, all right?
So we want to dismantle one of our best institutions and hand it over to a new quasi-governmental institution akin to the MWD, which is managed, for the most part, by private interests and unqualified people who use these seats and these board positions for personal and political gain. This is being done under the guise of removing politics from the process, which is a phrase that's often repeated by politicians and businessmen in California that don't want the scrutiny of the public engaged in the process and certainly don't want the public to have an avenue to interface with the government. All thoughts, actions, ideologies are political. This move is political. It represents a political power grab. This move is about removing governance, accountability, and the public from the process. And this is an attack on working people, it's an attack on ratepayers, and it's an attack on what little remains of the democratic process. We forget our history. These institutions are managed in the public trust because there is a rich history in this country of private governance of municipal resources, completely destroying the public health and the process. Prior to the 1920s, LA's municipal water system was managed by corporations, and what did they do? They flooded this city with cholera, typhoid,
Thank you.
...and the fire department.
Thank you, sir. So Ms. Horning, please come forward, followed by Mr. Spindler.
I'm Rachel Horning, a policy manager at BizFed, the Los Angeles County Business Federation, a grassroots alliance of 155 top business groups representing 275,000 employers in LA County. BizFed believes DWP must prioritize efficiency and transparency. Though we have not yet taken a formal position, we strongly support key elements in your motion, including DWP managing its own hiring rather than be subject to a bureaucratic civil service process, also replacing the volunteer Board of Commissioners to give the DWP dedicated professional oversight and more independence. In addition, we support the following solutions: immediately cap the amount of money, both the transfer and the utility tax combined, that is paid by DWP ratepayers to City Hall. When rates do go up, a portion of the new revenue should be used to subsidize the power bills of low-income customers. BizFed looks forward to continuing a constructive relationship with this committee to promote the success of DWP and a fair and transparent reboot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler.
Another scam on the way. Do you really think that you are going to do anything to stop this out-of-control utility with this garbage? You're going to have a seven-person board from the five. They're going to be full-time and paid. So you're going to do it like Department of Public Works, have a full-time commission. Are they going to have three meetings a week, like the Kevin James Panel? Or is it going to be a once-a-month, twice-a-month, bi-weekly bunch of crap like they do now? But we got all of our poverty pimps, Jack Humphreaville supporting a water rate hike. It's raining, we're drowning in water, and you're going to raise our rates. That's political. This is absolute garbage, it's all it is. You need to sell the DWP. Put that on the ballot as option B. Sell the DWP to investors and get the city out of this process. You transfer money from the ratepayers to you, and you're going to cap it? Get rid of it. And that's what's before the courts, and the courts are going to declare it illegal. So you're trying to pass something that's illegal. But what a surprise. Look who the drafter of the motion is, the man not running for reelection. And that's why he's doing this, because he's not going to run for reelection, right?
Let's stay on the topic.
So you got a three-member puppet panel on this commission, right here. You only got two members. Wheezy Weezer's not going to show up, so you got Marquisie Wheezy, and then Mr. President. Two votes, that makes a quorum? You call that a democracy? You're going to hold outreach meetings? No. The vote has to be to disband the DWP, sell it to investors, and take the cash and put it back into the strapped city. That's what you need to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, have you received any additional cards?
That's all the cards.
Joanne? Okay, and I'm not going to close public comments of other people come up. Would somebody take her card? Good to see you.
Good morning and good afternoon. I'm used to city council meetings. My name is Joanne Yvanna Garb. I'm from West Hills Neighborhood Council. Last night, my Government Relations Committee met and Last night, my Government Relations Committee met, and we were talking about putting this before our board as a community impact statement. But we didn't have enough information to even formulate a thought as to what to do for the community impact statement. So if we don't have the information, how is the general public going to have the information? We really need to educate ourselves first, and then move to a ballot initiative. It shouldn't be so rush, rush, rush. And I hope that in reaching, going out to the public and teaching them, it's not going to be like when we had the redistricting, when it was pretty much guaranteed what the districts were going to be prior to the community being involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will see, Joanne, that all the information from this meeting that your neighborhood council and all neighborhood councils will receive. We are requesting that there be a conversation at every neighborhood council where it relates to this during your March or April meeting, and we will be engaged with the council and the community as we move forward. And we'll even be chatting with you about the best ways to do that. With that said, why don't we bring Mr. Fuentes forward at this point to present before this committee?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you so much for making the time. I'd like to echo Mr. Harris Dawson's comments, Mr. President, about your willingness to provide a venue for us to really discuss what it is that Los Angeles wants and needs and should have in its utilities. So thank you very much for your commitment to this process. Colleagues, you know, this is a very, very important conversation that we're going to have, and I think it's one that is very critical to the future success of the city of Los Angeles. But we should take a moment, though, and celebrate the successes that we've had at the utility. And it's in large part due to the men and women of the utility that work each and every day to make sure that the utility works as best as it can. You're going to hear a lot of observations and concerns that people may have with the utility, but I don't think that we should reflect on those observations as criticisms of the personnel there. They are very good at what they do, but I think we could be better in how it is that we manage them. It was recently noted in the Navigant Report as a matter of example that the utility, while understaffed and sometimes with its challenges in management, has something going for it that most utilities in this country don't. They are more prepared, more situationally prepared to address situations, in particular with the aging infrastructure. So we should celebrate that as one of our larger assets. In fact, the utility, in its recent Integrated Resource Proposal last year or the year before, acknowledged the fact that almost a third of its workers are capable of retiring soon. And so that should be a real wake-up call to us to harness their energy, their information, and make sure that we don't lose anything from them. So let's just agree that the workforce is probably the largest asset that we have there. That being said, there's a couple of things that we intended to try to accomplish with this proposal. The proposal, hopefully, will begin to increase oversight and transparency at the utility. It should hopefully limit political interference. It should also streamline the utility operations so that work can be done more quickly for less money. And it should also figure out how to keep more of the ratepayer money at the utility. Now, some of the challenges that are facing the utility really is the lack of oversight there, and I think it's not any fault of one person or groups, but when you think of how it is that the utility is managed, it is a very complex system. Gentlemen, I know that you're familiar with it, but I think it's important to remember for those who are paying attention that this utility is managed by a citizen volunteer group of people that serves part-time. They're appointed by a mayor, and largely their decisions have to be ratified by this body, first a council committee and then ultimately the entire city council. That process makes it so that there isn't one group of people that is accountable to the utility. We all celebrate in their success, but we all get to avoid the blame. And so we need to figure out how to tighten that up. Also, one of the issues there is that there really is a lack of transparency. Our ratemaking process, as a matter of example, is something that's very different than it is in investor-owned utility world. There you have an administrative law judge that proceeds over the Public Utilities Commission, and there is a lot of opportunity, albeit arcane, a lot of opportunity to understand exactly how rates are made and what goes into them. Now, in that shareholder model, it seems to work really well. But here, in the ownership that the people have over this utility, it doesn't work all that well. We really don't have a good sense for how it is that rates are made in the city. In fact, the Navigant Report that was recently released that describes the current rate case effectively says that this process is really a Goldilocks situation. We pass rates based on whether they're just right, not necessarily if it is what the utility needs. And as a result of all of these challenges, the utility has trouble responding to crisis quickly. You can recall, colleagues, most recently, the fallout that happened from the new billing system rollout. We weren't swift. Despite the fact that the utility had the money, we weren't swift to respond to the long queues of calls or service or meter reading, largely because we don't have any of the processes in place that gives the ability, the opportunity to react in a faster fashion. So the reform that I'm suggesting, in terms of issue areas, focuses on a couple of things, five things to be exact. It would create a full-time professional board of water and power commissioners, one that is qualified, vetted, and has some expertise in the areas that the utility manages. Two, it would eliminate the need for the city council approval of board actions. That in of itself creates such a delay in terms of what it is that the utility needs to do versus the process that it has to go through, and as a result, doesn't save us any money. Three, I'd ask that we authorize the board to hire its own legal and policy budget advisors who could provide the utility and its decision-makers independent analysis. We enjoy a tremendous benefit, colleagues, here with the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer. We have the ability to temper our beliefs with real facts that are independent of the opinions that tend to benefit from those actions. So if we had more of an independent system over there, I think that not only would we save money, but we'd have a swifter process and one that isn't prone to the pushing and pulling of City Hall. Fourthly, I'd ask that we remove the utility from the civil service process, giving the utility its own hiring functions. I alluded to the fact that in the billing fiasco and crisis, we had the resources, but we didn't have the process catch up with the resources that we needed in order to solve it. Now, I want to be clear about something. I want to make certain that it's not misunderstood. We should absolutely honor the memorandum of understanding. Those workers who currently serve the utility have been represented and should continue to be represented. All I'm suggesting is that we create our own process for the utility so that they can hire and work more effectively and faster. Lastly, I'd suggest that we cap the city transfer at its level in 2010 when voters approved Proposition 26, for two reasons. There is a lot of scrutiny about that transfer. It is a transfer that we should celebrate in that it is a dividend that Angelenos get every single year in the form of service. It exemplifies our ability to have local control over utility, and rather than some investor-owned utility making profits, that profit is used and celebrated here in Los Angeles. So we should figure out how to secure that as much as possible. But conversely, that number is growing year after year. Today, the post Prop 26 dollar amount would be about $40 million. We have a problem at the utility that we are not being as fast as we need to be in order to maintain our approach to make sure that we're completing the cycles on infrastructure replacement. We need to figure out, other than just rate increases, a way for us to be able to put the capital into the utility so that we can stem the tide of demand on some of these infrastructure failures. We have to move from 300-year cycles, in some cases, closer to 100 years, and that's going to take a big infusion of money. So with that, colleagues, I wanted to just briefly mention to you some of the ideas involved with the reform suggestion, but I want to also be clear about something. This isn't going to work solely because the three of us agree on it. We're going to have to get tremendous amount of input to make sure that we temper what we think the solutions are with what the voters and the residents, and more importantly, the ratepayers are willing to give us an authority. This proposal, if we do it right, should increase the opportunities that the utility lends to its ratepayers. And we should begin to celebrate the benefits that a publicly-owned utility has over what, with all due respect to our IOU neighbors, our investor-owned utilities, we should celebrate everything that we can have as a result of having a functioning publicly-owned utility. It should give us the ability to have the better price and cost. It should be more reliable than our neighbors. It should be absolutely more customer-focused. It should maintain local control, and it should really exploit its status as a not-for-profit so that we do business in the most reliable, inexpensive way possible. So with that, colleagues, I would prefer to hear from you on what it is that you think is in the realm of possibility, and absolutely appreciate the opportunity to present before this august body.
Well, thank you very much, and that was a, I would say, one of the most solid presentations that I can remember hearing. It's obvious that you did a lot of work, and we appreciate that. We do view this as a tremendous opportunity, not just for this committee, not just for this council, but for the rest of the stakeholders in the city of Los Angeles, and we're really excited about what we will be able to do together. With that said, and again, also, Mr. Fuentes, we will act swiftly on this. We will be calling upon you in the future when we have more questions and things of that nature so we can get your perspective and your point of view. But what I thought we would do at this time, Mr. Harris Dawson, if we could bring up the CAO, CLA reps from the City Attorney's Office, let's hear from them. And as we move forward with this meeting, then we can come up with a variety of instructions I think that we might want to pass along. So who wants to start? Sharon?
Sure, I can start.
Ms. So?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Sharon So with the CLA's office. With me are Miguel Santana, CAO, Ben Chapman, City Attorney, and Harriet Trevetti with the City Attorney's Office. We have a short PowerPoint presentation that we would like to provide. We'll go through it very, very quickly. On the first slide is, just by way of background, on the DWP. DWP was founded in 1902, employing about 10,000 employees, 3.9 million customers for power and water. Next slide. Evolution of the DWP governance. So DWP was actually created in 1902. In 1902, it actually had a salaried president, which acted as the executive officer. In 1925, the general manager position was established. Interesting enough, over the next two terms there, 1925 to 1963, the charter amendments actually strengthen autonomy with DWP and actually increased the authority of the board. However, that shifted in the 1960s to 1999, where charter amendments actually weakened autonomy and reduced authority of the board. In 2000, the 1999 Charter Amendment established the current governance structure. And just to point out, in 2010, there were a number of governance issues that were discussed as potential ballot measures that ultimately led to the creation of the Ratepayer Advocate. Next slide. The current governance structure, the board is appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council for a term of five years. We do have a slight correction to this slide on the third bullet. The general manager is actually appointed by the board, but unique to the proprietary departments, the general manager is confirmed by both mayor and council. The charter does prescribe the responsibilities of the board, however, there are also limitations as well, as pointed out by Councilmember Fuentes. There are a number of actions that do require council approval, and a number of actions that are also subject to the charter's, Charter Section 245, which allows council to assert jurisdiction over certain matters. Next slide. This one just talks about the additional governance oversight that we have here. City Attorney is the legal counsel to DWP as specified in charter. Personnel Department handles all of the civil service hiring for the DWP. Of course, the CAO and CLA provide assistance to the elected bodies here in financial policy and in analysis. The Controller handles the accounting practices and conducts the IEA study, which, just one was completed, it is done every five years. And a separate governance structure related to the Office of Public Accountability, which was created in 2011. And with that, I'll turn the next slide over to Miguel.
Good afternoon. I'll be discussing various studies and initiatives over the last few decades that have discussed this issue in some detail. Back in 201999, there was a RAND study that looked at the governance as a whole as a result of the electricity deregulation and restructuring developments in the state. The RAND study basically concluded that, and I quote, "that the current governance structure is complex, divided, and cumbersome." The study offered a number of options, including the creation of a city-owned corporation with more centralized authority, the creation of an independent city agency with strong governing board, and a modified existing structure to streamline approval processes and limit political involvement, among the various options it listed. And according to RAND, both options would be more flexible and efficient than the existing structure. In 2009, there was an IES survey, as required by the charter, conducted by PA Consulting. The study findings were that the governance framework of the DWP does not facilitate efficient decision-making and clouds accountability to key decisions among stakeholders. It established that the relationship between the board and the DWP is unclear, and that the DWP lacks independent analysis of policy decisions. In 2010, there were a number of motions that were looked at, these questions. One of them was presented to the voters and adopted that established the Office of Public Accountability and required a new schedule for the transfer from the DWP to the city. Another item was not established, that looked at the establishment of Inspector General. More recently, there was the 2020 Commission back in 2014, that the report found that the DWP was subject to political interference and high leadership turnover leading to instability. The report recommended the establishment of independent oversight and rate-setting body, like the LA Utility Rate Commission, authorities what is recommended. The Rate Commission would be a five-member board appointed by the mayor, approved by the council, with authority to set rates, appoint the general manager, and determine policy, and provide operational oversight. And the most recent, of course, is the latest IEA survey conducted by Navigant, and Navigant is here, so they could certainly get into more details. They identified a number of challenges facing the DWP, including decentralized city authority, cumbersome hiring processes, limited transparency, and the ambiguous role of the Office of Public Accountability. The study recommends that the council form a hybrid committee, including representatives from the various city offices, to define the governance issue and ultimately seek a ballot measure. So as part of this review, we also looked at a number of different utilities throughout the country to sort of do it an example. We'll go on to the next slide. Here's a chart that shows ranging from Sacramento, San Francisco, Inglewood, Glendale, Burbank, Long Beach, and Pasadena, other public utilities. As you could tell, there are a number of different governance structures to consider. For example, Sacramento has... For example, Sacramento has the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, which is governed by a seven-member, part-time Board of Directors. The board members are elected to four-year terms by customers from seven geographical regions of service areas. The Board of Directors appoint the general manager. The board is supported by a special assistant, which helps the board fulfill its responsibilities. In Seattle, it's a structure closer to ours. It's a board that's the Seattle City Light, SCL, governed by the city council and the mayor. The mayor appoints the general manager, subject to approval of the council. The mayor makes recommendations to the council regarding rates based on information from the utility, and ultimately, the city council sets rates. And then, San Francisco, actually, this one's the one that's closer to ours. The other one was more aligned to a city department, which is governed by five commissioners who are nominated by the mayor and approved by the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. The commissioners serve on a part-time basis for terms of four years. Commissioners determine utility rates, approve contracts, and define organizational policy. With that, I'll turn it over to Sharon to walk you through the schedule.
So, the final slide, next slide, is a proposed ballot schedule. The changes that are being discussed today with regard to DWP governance would require a vote of the electorate. It would require a majority vote. We have three dates, potential election dates in the schedule. If it is the desire to go to the November 8 ballot, the last day that the council could instruct the city attorney to prepare resolutions is June 29. And last day for council to adopt the election resolution would be July 1. Would like to point out that that is because of the scheduled council recess. You would have more time, but for the recess, so that is a consideration. And then, we also have indicated the March 7 city primary dates, as well as the city general election in May of 2017.
Well, we, you know, I personally appreciate the schedule, but why don't we operate as if it is the desire of this committee and the council to be in a position to make a determination sometime in June, so that we would be able to place this on November's ballot? So at this point, everything that we do, everything that we talk about should be geared towards a November election, which means all of the legwork has to be done prior to or around the middle of June.
And with that, we're available to answer any questions.
Would you like to ask some? Mr. Fuentes, could we respectfully ask that you come to the table as well? Guys, or folks, just hang for a minute. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Mr. Fuentes, again, thank you for your very thorough and well-organized presentations. I had questions about the newly constituted board of the proposed governing body. Could you talk some about the process that you went through and what efficiencies you identified that caused you to land on this as a recommendation over some of the other models that we saw?
So, one of the things that I think was explored, and it was alluded to here by our CAO and our CLA, is that there are other models of governance out there. But what makes this utility so unique, I think, makes it difficult to pick one model. So, a couple of conversations that were had. It seems to me that the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, as a matter of example, is a very good model of a highly functioning, effective, and reliable utility. So, the idea of spinning off the utility is something that's alluded to in a lot of different reports, but the truth of the matter is, it ultimately probably will result at more expense to the ratepayer. The municipal utility legislation that allowed for Sacramento Municipal Utility District, as an example, would necessitate, assuming that the state statute would give us the ability to do this, would necessitate us having to go to the ballot here locally with the county to establish a utility district, and likely to ask the voters of the city of Los Angeles to allow for that type of change. So that seems overly rigorous and complicated. The idea of spinning off into a not-for-profit was also one that we looked into, but the truth of the matter is that just because you have not-for-profit status doesn't necessarily mean that you don't make a profit. This utility is very, very big, and there are tremendous tax implications if you were to spin it off, in which case, I sense that it would also increase costs ultimately to the new enterprise. So, understanding that, we looked back at the existing history of the city of Los Angeles, and the 1925 charter in particular, and realized that, really, this could be a lot simpler than has been proposed in the past. If we just figured out how to create the sense of independence, a real vetting, a full-time director-type position, it seemed to us that it would be the best way to proceed. And so, I wish I could point to one system and say, you know, they're doing it right, and it's so analogous to the city of Los Angeles, but truthfully, what makes this city great is its utility and its uniqueness, and we need to figure out how to move forward with it.
Following up on that, this is for Mr. Fuentes or any of the members. So, one of the things about the scope and scale of Los Angeles is, whatever Los Angeles creates something, at the same time, it creates an interest group or interest groups that are so huge that sometimes they become unwieldy and can dominate the discussion. I will offer, as an example, there is some critique of our school district. So our school district necessarily creates a very large teachers' union, and then creates other interests that are very, very large, and from an outsider's point of view, it can feel like the governing body is locked in a debate between those forces, rather than engaged in a discussion about the best way to run the outfit. And so, I'm wondering, as you all have thought out this proposal, how you thought about protecting the governing body from that kind of, that kind of gridlock?
So, let me just say, Mr. Harris Dawson, that, you know, I thought an awful lot about the school district in this conversation. In fact, this council, under then-council president Alex Padilla, set up a committee to investigate something that ultimately would result in Proposition F, which was a measure that was put in place to try to figure out how to professionalize a school board. As you know, the school board is a creature of our charter, and in some ways, very analogous to the Department of Water and Power. Certainly, the importance of educating our youth is larger than some of the things that we're talking about today, but they are a part-time board with a daily census of over 800,000 students. They are a $7 billion enterprise, yet they're managed by part-time people, largely part-time people. They certainly put in far more time than that, but the point of the matter is that they're directed by part-time people. Similarly, the utility suffers from the same types of challenges. We have very qualified, excellent citizen volunteers, but what we don't have is a structure in place that affords those citizen volunteers the independent analysis to make better decisions. We have a system that is so cumbersome, as it was alluded to by our CAO, that the process in and of itself drags on for some routine decision-making. So, I think we should probably not overthink this. We should figure out how to fortify that decision-making body, and how it is that we empower them to be truly independent, so that they can operate in the best interests of the ratepayer. The interesting thing to me in this entire conversation is that we have a citizen-election-type system where folks like yourself and I get to represent constituencies. We have a citizen volunteer that acts as a board and as a commissioner in serving this utility. We've now bolted on a ratepayer advocate to guarantee that the two other checks in the system do their job to the best capability. And still, we have higher levels of distrust in this system than we've ever had before. You've got ratepayer advocacy at every corner, but what we don't have is a professional, fully-vetted system that inspires trust and certainly guarantees a process that hopefully becomes more efficient and ultimately results in lower rates. And I think that, we don't have all of the answers today, but I think these questions hopefully will illuminate some in the future.
Okay. All right. And I guess, at this point, we're, I want you guys to stick around, because there'll probably be some instructions a little later. But, you know, we've discussed a variety of things today. What I would like to see from you is just more details, and I'd like to see cost. Okay, if we're talking about boards that are full-time or whatever, give us an idea of how much will this cost? How would this actually work? What kind of options would there be where it relates to creating a more independent board? How could we do it this way, that way? I mean, so let's get us a little more information where it relates to that. And I'd also like to have some kind of a quick packet of information that can be sent to all of the neighborhood councils, so that when they begin their review of this subject, that they at least have basic data that they can begin the conversation with. And again, before the, maybe before the hearing is over, or before the, by Monday of next week, let's come up with a letter that I can immediately get done into every neighborhood council as well. So again, if you guys could stick around, we appreciate the preliminary work that you did do. At this point, I guess I'd like to call up Navigant, representatives from Navigant, and if I could ask, Dr. Pickle, you want to come to, I think there'll be enough room for you at the table as well? And Mr. Clerk, are there any more cards from any additional people that wanted to speak before this body?
No, sir. There are no cards.
Okay. Okay, if you guys would please, for the record, identify yourselves.
Andrew Ray, I'm a managing director with Navigant, and with me is Laura Vogel, a member of my team, who worked on the governance proposals.
And I'm Fred Pickle, Executive Director, Office of Public Accountability Ratepayer Advocate for the city of L.A.
Okay, why don't we start out, let's get kind of like a brief presentation from Navigant, and I guess, Ms. Vogel, does that mean that you're up?
It'll be me.
Okay, so it'll be you. So she did all the work, but you get to say it.
I couldn't have said it better.
Yeah, okay. Go right ahead.
All right, thanks. You know, a few points in terms of governance. First, I'd just like to say what a privilege it is to be here today. We've been involved around governance and rate issues with DWP since 2009, and to see how quickly this body, Councilman Fuentes, other members of the city family are acting on this particular initiative is just really terrific to see. So, thank you for the opportunity. It's great to be here. When we did the 2015 IE survey, the original scope of that did not focus on governance. And as we began to do interviews and meetings with all of the key stakeholders and key participants, there was a uniform pattern, whether it was from union leadership or city officials, electeds, DWP management, community groups, civic associations, everyone had a, you know, it's fine to talk about the IRP, it's fine to talk about rates, but we really think there's a fundamental issue with governance that needs to be in your report, needs to be talked about, and that the city needs to deal with. As we fed that back to the CAO, the CLA, the controller's office, the mayor's office, they said, yes, let's take a look at this. So, we delved into governance. And there were some very clear themes that emerged as to why governance reform needed to be taken into account. The first was, nobody really had true accountability and authority. In the current structure, the mayor's authority is, can appoint the board, or can appoint the general manager. He can fire the board, fire the general manager. He can suggest policy. It's really where his role ends. City council really comes into play when the department wants money. They come before you, they lay out their proposals, and under the current structure, you say yes or you say no. You can't actually change their proposal in real time. If you want to change it, you give them feedback, they go away, they rework it. Adds a lot of time and complexity to the process. You're not part of the discussion, part of the policy shift until it's really almost too late, right? Now, we have big problems, infrastructure issues, et cetera. We need lots of money. And the time it takes to do that is considerable. The department's environment has also changed significantly. Running a power and water utility today is very different than it was 20 years ago or 30 years ago, where you had large fixed generating resources, large fixed water resources, and basically, it was like a long extension cord on the power side, and basically a reservoir with pipes on the water side. The complexity, the decisions that they have to make, the speed which they have to make them, it's a very different world. And the current, slow, cumbersome, bureaucratic, decentralized way puts the city and the department at a huge disadvantage. It makes it more difficult to get contracting resources when you need them, because you're competing against the investor-owned utilities and other municipals who are out for the same resources, so by the time you go to contract, you're behind the curve. The department's-
Let me jump in for one second. Miguel and Sharon, and what I forgot to mention is that we did have some concerns earlier on, were related to contracts, contracting out, so I would like to have that incorporated in the work that you bring back to us, and I really appreciate you bringing it up, because I had forgotten. But early on, before we started, those were mentioned as concerns. I'd like for us to respond to those. Yes, sir, back to you.
Right. And contracting has several different things. The DWP's contracting process today is very slow, very cumbersome. Then, bringing those contracts to council, that can be a slow, cumbersome process. And the net effect of that is, by the time you're ready to sign the contracts, the vendors may have moved on. Southern California Edison hired us in 30 days, six months, you know, we're still six months down the road with you. Those type of long, slow things really don't work. They result in a lot of extra money, a lot of extra time. Right now, the way time, money, decision-making work are all suboptimum. The other issue that was brought up, both by the CLA, the CAO, and Councilman Fuentes, is the professionalism and the knowledge of the people making the key decisions. The LADWP board, as currently configured, has people who may know a little bit about the utility industry. Sometimes, they know a lot about it, but it's very inconsistent. Yep, they're asked to make really complicated, very expensive decisions, and their only real form of advice is DWP staff. So, when you go to a DWP board meeting, and they're voting on rate increases or contracts, they're advised by the DWP board, people who are asking for the money. So there isn't, as Councilman Fuentes talked about, that true professional board, supported by professional staff, so you can make truly objective, truly well-informed decisions. So, changing that, whether it's exactly the way as Councilman Fuentes has put forward in his motion, or as the CLA or CAO said, there's lots of ways to do this. Changing it, getting it right for the city of Los Angeles, we believe, is absolutely essential. It's complicated. We do think the councilman's motion goes a long way, but there are lots of things to think about, and one thing that we think is really important is to look at it holistically. So, just changing the board and the board staff, it's a great step, but it's not enough. You have to look at sort of all of the ordinances, the charter things, the governance structure, how they relate to each other, so that you get the whole, you get the whole flow right. It is complicated, right? And so, you can't just change one part and hope that it fixes everything. We've also talked about the role of the OPA in our report, and clarifying that. It's currently, I think the word that was used is ambiguous, and it's, you know, it's a new office, it's trying to do the best it can, but it's both part of the process and supposed to be outside of the process. It's supposed to be an independent advisor, but it's also very much, you know, sits at the DWP board, works closely with city officials. Setting the OPA up so it has the resources to succeed and the true independence that we need, is what the city needs, we think is one of the important actions that governance reform can take. In other words, to let Dr. Pickle's office be even more well-resourced, more successful, more independent, truly be the ratepayer's advocate, which, right now, it's hard to do because of the way the office was set up. The other thing, you know, that we think is really important is consistency and efficiency. You know, the number of general managers at LADWP over the last 12 years is considerable. You know, the number of general managers at LADWP over the last 12 years is considerable. It approaches the number of years that I just mentioned. That turnover, over and over and over again, leads to, every time there's a new general manager, there's new policies, there's new processes, and they're always trying to deal with that same inside-the-MOU structure, and it's really, really complicated. And they're also trying to deal with civil service hiring practices. Each general manager needs more time to be able to sort of identify the issues, deal with the issues, and make the changes. The revolving door doesn't serve the city well. And it's also, when things go wrong, the general manager is sort of the first head that usually rolls. And, you know, we looked at a lot of other cities, including Sacramento, which was mentioned, where we found good governance from the city or the government agency over the department. We also found things like employment contracts. So, the general manager would have, very similar to the police chief, who has an employment contract in the city of L.A. So, it makes it much harder to just roll people in, roll people out over quick periods of time. So, all of those sort of things. How do we retain management? How do we operate in an efficient way, so we're not redoing the thing? The other thing that we talked about, and we think it is important to really change the relationship with the union, to make the union more of a partner, less of an adversary, than under the current system. You know, we had the opportunity to speak with union leadership as part of doing the IEA study and to get their views, and, you know, it was really interesting to see that they were very much in the, we don't like the current system either, you know, we'd like to be able to see change. We want change to be effective, you know, we're not going to just sign off on anything, and obviously, they want to represent their members. But, you know, their attitude about adopting and accepting significant governance reform, we thought, you know, clearly, it is the right time if all of the parties with all of their different interests are sort of aligning within that. So, we think for this to be effective, not only do you need the community groups, as well as all the other stakeholders, but also, we think, union needs to have a seat at the table and be an active participant as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, that was a darn good presentation, so I-
Thank you.
-I salute you and Ms. Vogel for all of the work that you did on it as well. And as we proceed, you know, there may be some other questions that I might, I might have. It would appear that the time is right, that people are ready for a serious conversation about some change, and that's what we're trying to put in place here. But I want us to all be realistic. I mean, it's, it's easy to just say, and I don't want anybody to say, oh, my God, he doesn't support it. It's, that's not what I'm saying. It's easy to say, let's get department heads that we can keep. That's easier said than done. It's easier to say than done to go out and just say, okay, this is the experience that we want people to have and how it works. So, I think there's still a lot of conversations that need to take place, and I think that we should all recognize that in some respects, we're going into a different territory. So, there's no set guaranteed answers or what have you. Some of what we do at the end of the day will be a leap of faith.
Faith, oh, yeah.
That's for sure. Mr., unless Mr. Harris-Dawson has something to say, Dr. Pickle, we'd let you say a few words at this point in time.
As we go through this process and we're thinking about the alternatives, it's, I think, important to think about long-term goals and issues facing DWP that Andrew referred to, but also, short-term goals to deal with surprises in DWP's lack of agility. In the long term, DWP is going to be facing increased competition from distributed energy resources, especially solar. They're going to see more comparisons to their neighbors because their rates are getting closer to those of their neighbors, and in some cases, have passed those of neighboring utilities. They have cost pressure because of infrastructure replacement and mandates on the utility, and they're also struggling with the problems of management stability. You really need a general manager and key management leadership positions to be, to have the stability associated with employment contracts. And even in the most sophisticated organizations, you lose perhaps half of your senior executives with lack of a fit, but we still need that stability in the process. I strongly agree there has to be a partnership, and it's not just between management and labor, but also across the, across the city to accomplish this successfully. It's going to be a very difficult transition for DWP, but it's very necessary. And then, on short-term goals, let's keep in mind, DWP needs to be more agile. They fail to hire or contract very quickly, and things that can speed up hiring and contracting are key to their ability to respond to situations that may be increasingly common as their business environment changes. And lastly, DWP is often too insular. An example, simple example, the training budget across Water and Power is roughly 130 million a year. Virtually, all those funds are spent internally in terms of employee costs for employees, training employees. We need a little new blood in this process, and that's one of the benefits of going beyond a civil service system, because you can bring in senior blood or blood at various levels, new blood at various levels of the organization, to help introduce new ideas. And lastly, as we go through this process, we shouldn't get too insular. As we look at governance, let's not forget people outside the U.S., where the publicly-owned utility is a common model. The easiest examples are our Canadian friends, who have large public utilities that have good rates in many cases, and they have perhaps lessons to be learned out of their governance processes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris-Dawson, you know, then, again, I want to thank everyone for coming out today. What I, I think, the way I think we should proceed, that there are specifics that we'll go on and get from the CAO and the CLA. We'll work very hard at this point to try to quickly put together meetings with the councils and other stakeholders, and then maybe we will come back and have some kind of a first report as to what we got when we went out into the community. So, you've given us a lot to think about. We will think about it quickly and decide what the next move will be, but I don't anticipate that there'll be a lot of delays. This is a very, this is a very nimble committee that does react quickly, and so, I'm sure that we will, in fact, be able to do that. So, I want to thank everybody for coming out today. I want to thank the public for your second suggestions, and know that we're going to factor those in. Again, Navigant, I just want to say again that I was really impressed with your presentation, and I may ask for a private meeting. So, and Mr. Fuentes, thanks for putting in all of the hard work necessary to get this conversation started. We'll, again, now engage more with the Mayor's Office, that I know is chomping at the bits, that wants to help put in place the involvement from the community. So, we will, in fact, do that. Thanks, everybody. Any more business before this committee, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir. That clears it up.
Then, this committee's adjourned. Thank you all so very much.